Tank, like, you know, not annually, but every sixteen months. So it comes around, um, you know.
Are you talking about the propane?
If it was the propane, I think it was one of the, yeah, it would be, one of the fuels.
Yeah, they point, we had, we had, I think we pointed that out and they.
Yeah, you were, because you were looking for savings and if.
Yeah.
But, Anna, do you have trends?
Um.
My recollection is that that nine fifty-seven from two thousand and sixteen was abnormally low for some reason.
And the reason it was low is because.
Oh, yeah, they, they.
The fuel, the fuel tanks, when we, um, took it out.
Yes.
We had to give them a credit, no?
No.
There was, there was something, there was some abnormal.
Because that was diesel.
Well, did we get a credit because they took the diesel from us?
That is the case, and we got that covered somewhere else. I think it Joe's budget, because he was all the cost of the diesel in town. That, these fuels are propane and gasoline for the chief's cars.
So Niantic Fire has expended, um, five hundred and fifty dollars and, oh, that's Flanders. And Niantic is four oh seven.
See, it's, it's a big.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't wanna hurt them or anything like that, but it seems like just that number's running high. I don't know if that's another flatline number.
Want to knock a thousand off of each?
I mean, based on history, it's.
Yeah.
Not gonna impact, you know.
Doesn't hurt them.
Shouldn't hurt them.
Well, we're giving them other stuff everywhere.
I mean, we can't predict if gas prices go up, but.
Right.
But we're not gonna not let them fuel, you know, it would be, would have to go continue to see if we're wrong, but. It just seems like we're running way off that number.
I, I think, I think you're right.
Yeah. So I'd be comfortable with a thousand off each.
Off of.
The fuels.
Three oh one for both, uh, Flanders.
Yeah, yep.
Of the two seventeen, two eighteen budgets, uh, Flanders, Niantic, does anyone have any other opinions on those lines? Are we pretty good with that?
Based on the returns.
Based on the return, based on what they're doing.
Yeah, but if I'm wrong, let me know, but.
No, right.
They're still leaving them almost twice of what they're probably gonna spend in a year.
Right, seems like there's, yeah, there's a buffer there.
Now, if I do remember correctly, didn't Chief Lavandowski say he'll be stepping down and they estimate the new chief may be, well, if he does use it more, we can revisit it. Because we don't know that.
If you charge his trips from DC, if I'm, uh.
No.
New York, so, I mean, it's just around town.
Yeah, just using, okay, all right, I'm, I'm good with.
Everything else is pretty straight up, and I do see these groups working together more and more. I'm really hopeful for, that next year we'll be introducing new programming for them to come together, work together, and maybe even combine a budget under a public safety budget. That's the end goal. Um, is, is more accountability, um, and, and shared expenses and resources.
Yeah.
And not give up any fire protection either, of course. So, um, a thousand on each, do we need to vote on that? Anyone have a problem with that, is there any consensus?
No, just vote on the bottom line.
I'd like, we're not voting, we're just, bottom line, all our ideas, right?
No, the bottom line for this budget, I thought we were voting.
You wanna vote on it?
Each budget as we went along.
No, I thought we were, for ones we had consensus on, I thought we were gonna vote.
We were moving on, we're just moving on, and just gonna vote on the bottom line, unless there's some controversy or abstentions or reasons to vote on them individually.
Well, in the past, we have voted on them individually, but I don't have an objection, if that's how people prefer.
If there's, if there's general consensus, I think we should just move on then, um, for efficiencies.
The, um, four eighteen, commission of aging.
Yep.
After what we heard tonight, um, and seeing that the programs, the program money does bring in fifty percent, I would, I would like to, um, bump it from thirty-two to thirty-four.
I would, I would be very comfortable with that, too. This is a, the, the people utilizing the services of the senior center are, are only increasing, and, and it does do a great job. And I, I think giving them a couple thousand would help them, plus, I think the revenues, between that and the revenues she's getting, would offset that four thousand dollar cut.
I think it's money well spent.
I think Kathy could find a balance between this, this, a cut of only two thousand instead of four, and maybe finding ways in her programming to find ways to, um, you know, make sure the cost of programming is keeping up with the times.
Were you at a meeting with them this week?
I did, I had, today.
And?
And that was kind of the consensus, is a two thousand dollar cut wouldn't hurt as much as a four, and could be lived with and dealt with. Mixed opinions, frankly, from her group. I, I was hearing, yeah, you should really look at the pricing. And of course Kathy's very passionate about, you know, giving as many services for free as possible, but we're just in this time where.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't, I didn't mean to hurt her, but there was discussion at the original budget discussion about using this special revenue fund as a way to subsidize programming within her. And, um, I, maybe I misinterpreted the conversation. I had written down four during our conversation, uh, four thousand a cut, and I thought we all were in agreement with that. I, I think we're in a different place now. I, I would support a, a two thousand dollar increase to that number.
Line four fifteen.
Line four fifteen, I would support that, too, Mark. And I think Kathy.
The in, program instructors as opposed to program services?
Correct.
That's where we took the four thousand out.
That was the four thousand cut, and we put two thousand back in.
Okay.
I would agree with that as well.
Yeah.
Likewise.
I got, yes, 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 and all the way through, so I think we're, we're, Anna, you got that covered?
Two thousand?
Yeah, two thousand back in, as, as agreed upon. Other cuts, any suggestions, folks? So Anna, you have some suggestions that we've been working on, um, or I support you on, you do all the work around here.
Um, so if you recall when, um, we went over the police budget.
Police.
Um, there was some issues with, um, some accounts, and so I met with Sergeant Maisick and, um, went over them. So I'm gonna go over those items with you, in addition to, um, a couple, one other item.
Tab number?
Oh, it's.
Two sixteen.
Two, two fifteen.
Two fifteen.
Oh, no, two sixteen.
Two sixteen.
Yeah. Two one six.
Okay, so, um, the first account is the resident trooper account. What I've been discussing is the possibility of using some of the contingency funds from the current year budget to help pay for the resident trooper bill that we all know that we're gonna get at the end of this fiscal year. Um, in the seventeen eighteen budget, we, we put a hundred and forty-five thousand in. I believe that the, the bill we receive from the state, if we stay, if we don't convert until July first, is gonna be more like a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So I'm saying, let's allocate sixty-five thousand dollars from this year's contingency account. Of course, it would have to be approved by both your board and the board of finance. So i- if we did that, we would be able to reduce the resident trooper account in next year's budget by a hundred, um, by thirty-five thousand, making it a hundred and ten. The other.
Well, wait a minute.
Okay.
Uh, that's line one fit, one one five.
Yes.
And so it's at one forty-five.
Right.
And so now you're suggesting reduce that by sixty-five?
By thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Because we're, we're gonna need to, um, allocate, um, the sixty-five thousand in, in, um, this year's budget.
All right.
And we didn't quite put enough in next year's budget, so we, we can only reduce it by the thirty-five.
Okay.
And then the, um, the other two, um, the police officer account, the five eleven account, we need to add ten thousand dollars to that. And the reason is because when the budget was originally prepared, um, longevity and shift differential pay were accounted for in the, um, five sixteen account. So we would add ten thousand to the five eleven account and reduce the longevity shift differential account, which is the five sixteen account, by ninety-two hundred. I mean, it, they don't quite offset each other, but when we went through the calculations, checked what our liability is to all of the, um, officers for their longevity payments, that was, um, what we came up with. And then the last item is, um, the two fourteen, uh, two fourteen account in section two hundred, which is computer maintenance. The original request was for ten thousand, and, um, it, it was reduced to five thousand. But once we discussed it with Sergeant Maisick, they need the, the full ten thousand. Five thousand of it is for the portion they pay to Star Computers, and the remaining five thousand is for miscellaneous technology needs that come up during the course of the year. So they, they do need it for that purpose.
And it's not even miscellaneous, it's specific computer, uh, issues that, that they need, the five thousand. It's not a contingency five thousand, it's, uh, five thousand that's been identified they need.
Right.
For computer.
So, so the net reduction, um, to that department would be twenty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
I'm sorry.
From the bottom line.
From the bottom line.
From the bottom line of twenty, two point six million, would take it off again?
They're taking fifty-eight hundred off the thirty-five thousand that she wants to use this year's money to pay for the state trooper.
Right. So fifty, right, that's the number, so how, what's the, uh, bottom line of that? Or how much are you taking off?
With the, the, the net reduction is twenty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars.
So I have two million, two million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars.
Because of the size of the budget and the complexity of the changes, do you want to make a vote on that?
Well, just let me ask one question. What happens if the board of finance doesn't agree to use the money to pay this year? We have to put this back in, take it out of contingency, I, I don't know what the risks of that would be.
They only, or we move it around, because the board of finance is also gonna move these numbers.
Right.
So, uh, we're gonna present, when we present the budget to them next week, we're gonna also say, oh, by the way, this is the number, and this is why. Because we're, we're planning on taking that money out of contingency. If they're nodding their heads, then they understand that that's what they're gonna, they're, they're committing to do. And if not, then we gotta go stuff another thirty-five, or sixty, sixty-something thousand dollars back in.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, we'd have to get a commitment from them, that that would be going through. But. Yeah.
So am I.
We're, we're good with that, then, we don't need to vote, um, we, we, bottom line on that?
Well, we're on the topic of police. It occurred to me, we didn't do any budget for the police commission, did we? How are we gonna give them any money? We're gonna take that out of, uh, contingency, or we're gonna set up a separate thing for them?
It's a very good question, it's one of the six of us, I guess.
Well.
I'm gonna ask Anna that, and she's probably not listening.
I am. Police commission.
Police commission, do they have a budget?
We didn't give them any budget, I don't believe. There must be plans to take the money out of ad hoc or something.
No, 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 no.
They should have a budget, shouldn't they?
They have recording secretary duties, if nothing else.
The recording secretary is done by the, um.
By the salaried, is part of the job description, but yeah, you don't get paid for this.
So there isn't.
Yes, I know.
You know.
We haven't given them any operating money, aside from the secretary, for any supplies that they might need, or?
It's coming out of the First Leckman's office.
Okay.
That'd be, that's obviously something that'll have to be done for.
Copy, and, and, and part of the job description was to support the police commission, um, when we, when we changed personnel. So, um, we're getting, you know, supplies and secretarial duties and copies and such out of First Leckman's office.
Okay, advertising for positions, we take that out of, uh, the Leckman's account?
Well, we, it, it, we takes, you know, advertising, it, it, so, you know, sometimes we charge it to the legal notice account in.
Yeah.
Department one four, uh.
Yeah, after the chief, I don't know, we're not anticipating any increases, because we're not approving any more officers either.
Uh, no, but we may have.
You may replace, yeah, right, right.
So I think what perhaps we should do is, um, I, I didn't think to look at our ad hoc account, uh, but with, perhaps if there were any.
Yeah.
Any expenses, perhaps we could take that out of the ad hoc.
Yeah, and there's not much.
Yeah, for this year.
Ad hoc is thirty-five hundred dollars, frankly, and I don't spend.
If they have a request, that, that's why we take.
But it's a good point, Roseanne, and as they mature as a commission, they might need their own line, or certainly a budget line within the police, police budget.
Actually, I would think, and when they prepare their budget for next year, the police commission's budget will be incorporated in the, uh, police department's budget.
Actually, be a commission of the town, right?
Yeah.
I tend to think it should be separate.
Yeah.
But we could discuss that later.
Yeah.
Do the other.
We'll see how that all works, we'll see how other towns do it, too. Do the police commission actually support the budget, or does it, or is it separate? Yeah, that's a good point, things we're gonna discover during, during this new journey. Uh, other departments to look at, Anna, did you have other, um, things you were looking at?
Yeah, Anna, you had, you gave me something for, uh, under vehicle acquisition and so forth.
Yes, so, um.
So we go to C N R E for this.
That's department seven twenty-four, and so for the, I reviewed all of the, um, acquisition accounts one more time, looking at existing commitments, and then what we're proposing for the upcoming seventeen eighteen fiscal year. And what I found is for, um, the parks and rec, um, account number, I had put in the amount of repayment for one of the deals two times. So the amount of that is thirteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. So for account number four twenty-one, which is town, uh, parks and rec acquisition program, it's listed as proposed at seventy-eight thousand, four, eight hundred and forty-six dollars, and, um, we would be able to reduce it by thirteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. So the amended proposed would be sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight. The same thing for police, the police vehicles, um, it's currently proposed at one hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and, um, we would be able to make a reduction of sixteen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Is that also because we're losing the chief's car out of this budget?
I rechecked to make sure that the amount we're putting in for next year's, um, plan is just for two.
Two, two.
Uh, the two.
Patrol cars.
Patrol cars along with the equipment, so the total, it's a hundred and nine, five thirty-four, I believe, it, it, purchase price.
Yeah.
And then the final one is the fireworks account, which is seven oh eight. It's proposed at five nineteen, eight ninety-six, and, um, the acquisition payment for the streetlights is actually in, um, another department, and I included it in the capital as well. So that's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar, uh, eight dollar, uh, reduction. So the, um, amended would be three seventy-four, eight eighty-eight.
And Anna, I had noted that the number was gonna be, the five nineteen was gonna be reduced by thirty-seven, three six three.
Thank you, four eighty-two.
Forty-two, okay, and then you're taking off another?
No, the total amount to take off is one four, hundred forty-five thousand.
That includes the thirty-seven, okay.
Oh, that includes the thirty-seven, okay. So now we do, so now we do come up with three seventy-four, as the, as the figure.
Eight eighty-eight, yeah.
Okay.
That's the line.
Seven oh eight. So when you get down to the bottom, uh, bottom line on the capital outlays, capital equipment, seven twenty-four budget, what is that, then? One forty-five. That's thirty. One seventy-five?
My head without the calculator, I got nine thirteen, six, six fifty-four.
That, well, let's hold that, and let's see how close, yeah.
It's nice having two engineer bookends, isn't it?
My gosh.
It's a little overwhelming.
Yeah, don't you think?
I'm using my fifth grade math skills for a change.
And I came out with nine twenty-three, six forty-six.
She's much more accurate than me.
Okay. I, I hadn't had your number written down.
Your number was better.
Yeah. I like your new math.
Not from the town, though.
That's, that's, that's a positive, that's a negative direction, but a positive result.
Actually, I got nine two three, six four six, but that means we're coming in, uh, we're coming in a hundred and twenty-four thousand, almost a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Where, where are you getting the original figure from, we're one thousand, oh, ninety-eight?
No, I'm comparing it to last year's.
Oh, I see.
According, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand less than last year.
Yeah.
So that's.
Well, we're not buying a lot of equipment this year. There's, you know, there's big purchases out there, but there's not a lot of them, and, and we're getting rid of that, uh, the obligation of the, the chief's cruiser by doing it this year, which is really handy as well. Are there any other cuts, any other considerations? Y'all wanna go through it one more time, is there, I know we made a lot of notes.
No.
So far, I have police down twenty-nine K.
Yeah, I have us down thirty-nine, two fifty-eight overall. Considering that the money we've put back in, we've put two thousand back in for the, uh.
Two thousand, which was offset by the two thousand with the fuel, plus a thousand for the, um, historic places, right? Down eleven thousand for emergency managers, so that's ten, so we're down ten. Down twenty-nine for police.
Contingency.
Thirty-nine, so we're down almost two hundred K, plus two hundred and sixty-four K from capital.
We haven't talked contingency.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You heard my whisper.
But we're down about two hundred K, if I'm not mistaken, Anna. Let's say miss something.
About that, yeah.
Okay.
But given the, uh, volatile nature of the world right now, um, I, I concur with you guys on the, uh, department one twenty contingency budget. This discussion in our caucus, when we broke, uh, adding seventy-five thousand on there, uh, to contingency and make it an even two thousand.
Mm-hmm.
How do you feel about that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think I've, I, I, I feel, you know, we have no idea what's gonna happen to Harper.
Well, it's just prudent to have.
And I'd love to keep it to one twenty-five, because then, you know, but we have to plan for, you know, uh.
I think it's better to do it now and not have, and perhaps not have to spend it, rather than trying to have to go through the whole.
No, I.
Assemblies of a special appropriation.
I agree with you.
Yep.
This brings you up to what we had this year, closer to what we had in the budget this year.
Yeah.
No one, we're gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna spend it.
We'll certainly have to make cuts and use some of this stuff.
And in years past, we've spent a whole lot, uh, more than this in contingency, or budgeted for it, anyway. But, uh, so we're gonna add seventy-five thousand to that, make it an even two thousand, and, um.
So that should leave us with a reduction.
About a hundred and twenty-five K. To budget this size. Any other cuts, any other?
Uh, only because of, I think, our, for the contingency, considering how important we think that is, I think that might be a good motion to make.
Go ahead.
I'll move to add seventy-five thousand dollar to the, uh, contingency, right, raising it from a one twenty-five, hundred twenty-five thousand to two hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year, two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Second?
Okay.
Nope.
We're all jumping on the second. Uh, any comment? Good move, guys, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? There we go. So we'll wait for Anna to move her, her magic mouse around there, and give us a, a number that we should vote on. Maybe just write them down and hand them to Kevin, that, that'd be a better way to making that motion.
I can always sit while they're all ready.
Yeah.
Would we, um, like to go to any ex officios, and then come back to this?
I haven't had an ex officio, so I can.
Why don't we, um, Anna, you gonna be close? I think it'll only mess up my minutes. I know it's getting late, though.
Give her the, give her the five minutes or something she needs, and let's just have any ex officios.
Okay, so I'm girding.
I, I thought she'd be ready.
I'm also.
But she needs to be able to.
See, I, I work with.
She needs to be able to double check it.
Oh, she wants it to double check, all right, so.
All right, I'll, I'll start, if that's right.
You want me to write it down?
Sure, sure, so let's do some ex officios.
Planning yesterday, um, I wasn't able to make it, but I did get the report, they had two applications, referrals from zoning. One was on just changing the definition of a hotel motel definition, uh, that passed, and then there was another one. Um, actually, this was an application, uh, uh, from a developer in town to reduce the requirement from ten thousand to, um, in commercial zones for mixed use, I believe, from ten thousand, uh, square feet property down to seventy-five hundred. Uh, they, they found it inconsistent with a plan of conservation development, that moved on to zoning.
Mm-hmm, and that's on the zoning agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay.
So I can report on that at the next meeting. Uh, I did attend the commission on aging meeting, which was primarily a discussion of how to approach you with, uh, requests.
I thought it was very approachable, I tried really hard to be a kind man, I, but, but it was nice that they came, and thank you for encouraging that, I think that was a good move.
And, um, next month will be my month to do board of ed.
Congratulations.
So the rest of you can rest easy for a month, until your number comes up.
Mine's April, so.
Have anything?
Just really quick, uh, there, and I know you're gonna cover this bit under your, your selectmen's report, but there's a group, um, meeting that wants to, uh, construct a, uh, have a dog park in town, we've identified a location, I met with the group, Donna Palumbo is the chair of that. Um, we've identified a spot, a site, uh, my vets' park. Uh, right now, their concern is fundraising, uh, they're planning on doing, uh, some functions, they're planning on looking at ways to get information out to everybody, having a booth that, uh, celebrating slime day and so forth like that. Because they know that, uh, in this tough times, that they should, they feel an obligation to put up, uh, as much of the cost as possible to, to build it. So it's a very enthusiastic group, uh, Brooke, uh, in Anna's office is involved, so a lot of very good people, a lot of good experience, so I think very positive things will come out of this very soon.
So hopeful for that.
Yeah.
Mr. Cunningham?
Uh, I have, I was in a lieutenant meeting, I don't have a. Board of Education, uh, I had an update from the Assistant Superintendent Schools on their strategic plan going forward, and, uh, they'll be bringing that back, uh, to the commission, and a couple other, uh, action items are moving out a couple months, but very enthusiastic of what they've, uh, accomplished so far, and looking to complete it by the end of the fiscal, end of the school year, so they're in a position to adopt it going into next year. And it's on their knowledge, learning knowledge activities.
And, and that's your report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, and, uh, it's not, uh, it's not an evening that, uh, demands a, uh, lengthy First Selectmen's Report. I will make, make, make mention, again, in our meeting, that we have now officially scheduled a referendum for March fourteenth, from eight AM to eight PM. All three districts will vote at the community center. All able voters and, uh, landowners with assessed value, uh, or any assessed value property, uh, of, of over a thousand dollars, I believe, are qualified to vote for this, is also, um, um, absentee ballots available, not to be mailed out, but to be picked up. Um, and, and you can designate someone to pick it up for you. You know, someone in a convalescent home can designate someone to come down to the clerk's office, they'll be available on Friday of this week. Um, that's, I think, the third of March. Again, March fourteenth, the referendum, the referendum is a thirty-seven point five million dollar, um, uh, bond resolution to, uh, build, renovate, renovate the three elementary schools that we have in town. They, we were hoping to put money into them and spruce them up, and bring them up to the proper standards to last us another twenty to twenty-five years. Um, that's the vote, a yea or a nay. Um, there, the, the, the dog park people are great, I'd love to see grassroots in a small town, because these people are gonna get it done, and, and their heart is in it, and, 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 and fundraising, they know it's important that they need to come up with at least fifty percent of the cost, um, and to turn it over to the town to finish up the project. I think that's brilliant, I think it's wonderful, we've identified a space, uh, behind Veterans Park, Vets Park, uh, behind the baseball field, in the woods, it's common for dog parks to have shade and, um, a nice long stretch under trees to run, uh, two sections, large dog, small dog. There's been a recent spark up about dogs being on the boardwalk, uh, on social media. Um, it, they're not allowed on the boardwalk, they never will be, it's not just the feces that some irresponsible dog owners evidently leave. Uh, but even the, you know, when you're trying to clean up, sometimes there's residue, so there's that. But also, our, our boardwalk wasn't designed like Atlantic Cities and Ocean City, Maryland's and Virginia Beach, where you can. and Virginia Beach, where you can drive three Mack trucks side by side down these things. If you're a small child, or an elderly person, or just someone who's fearful of dogs, you can't get away. So a dog on a chain, you can't get away from that dog, and your chain, leashes are longer often than, you know, keeping the dog at your knee, and that can always, can never be guaranteed. And dogs passing one another, you know, what happens if you have a hundred dog walkers out there, and all these dogs are there, and things happen in that community? Dogs are people, too, and we love them. But they're allowed, in many places, it's been pointed out, they're allowed to be walked at Paret's Park. I know, you like that? Dogs are people. The perimeter of Paret's Park is a great place to walk dogs downtown. Our beaches, you can, up until Memorial Day, walk your dog on a beach. We request that they're on a leash, but, you know. And also the walking trails in town, we have great walking trails that dogs love. So we gotta keep them off the boardwalk, and I just wanna reiterate that. It's a lot of stuff going on, social media, but we're working on that dog park, God bless those people. I am also a member of the Police Commission and the Water and Sewer Commission, they both met within the last week. Police Commission are splendid, happen to be all gentlemen this time, but they're doing great work. We are anticipating a switch over to independent police on May first. There's been a lot of work that's being done. We anticipate interviewing a chief in the next week. Re-interviewing the candidates to be chief the following week, and then we, hopefully we'll have a decision before the end of this month, and it's someone signed on the dotted line with a, with a contract. And Water and Sewer is, is busy at work with many projects, but one in particular, we wanna update, update all the water meters in town and make them radio controlled, radio red from home base. We'll be able to send out bills quarterly, so people can have smaller bills and, and be able to spread their budget out. But also, we'll be able to identify leaks right away. If there's an anomaly with someone's water intake, we'd be able to identify that instantly. You could get, you could sign up to get a text message if your water usage has gone up by a certain percent in a, in a twenty-four hour period, and individually. And that's gonna save water, but it's also gonna save the issue of people getting large water bills 'cause their toilet is running, or, or they left the house, they left the hose going, and, and all that stuff. And I, it's what water companies do in, in the twenty-first century, and I think our water department is busy trying to figure a way to pay for this, 'cause of course the costs have to be passed along to the water users, but it's, it's, it's proper, it's what's gonna, needs to be done. We have a lot of water meters out there, that's, they're twenty-five to thirty years old, that don't register correctly. And I think there's, there's customers out there that probably way paying way too low, but also paying way too high. So, um, so this will be a fair process as well, and benefit everybody, so, that said.
I have two requests.
Yes, ma'am.
Minutes of the Police Commission, I'd like to ask if we could have copies of those minutes in our packet on the table at future meetings, so that we-
Forever?
Yes, forever and ever.
No other commission, just the Police Commission? Just picking on them?
Well, they're special. Just so that we can see how things are going for the time being.
Okay, let's just say for, until, let's say for the next several months, for sure. I, I think it's good.
And we also have not received monthly incident reports in the last month or so.
Oh, Sergeant Maisick told me that, yeah, he had-